Petition of the Danbury Lodge, number 120, with benevolent and protective order of the Elks, to amend section 5(c)(2a) of the zoning regulations, add club as permitted use to the LCI 40 zone. The legal notice will be read by Commissioner Wetmore. Staff report will be read by Commissioner Malillo. And I will read your planning commission recommendation.
Green notice, notice hereby given that the zoning commission of the city of Danbury will hold a public hearing commencing at 7:30 p.m. on October 27, 2009, in the Compliment Chamber of City Hall, 155 Deer Hill Avenue, to consider the following matter. Petition of Danbury Lodge, number 120, of the benevolent and protective order of the Elks Incorporated, to amend section 5(c)(2a) of the zoning regulations, add club as permitted use to the LCI 40 zone. Parties interest and citizens have the opportunity to hear at this conference.
Thank you.
City of Danbury Planning and Zoning Department, dated October 21, 2009, City of Danbury Planning Commission, City of Danbury Zoning Commission, from Dennis I. Ellery, regarding benevolent and protective order of the Elks, in petition to amend section 5(c)(2a) to add club to the LCI 40 zoning district. We receive a petition to add club as a permitted use for limited roadside commercial industrial district, LCI 40, for lobby Elks to relocate the facility to 36 Sugar Hollow Road, which is US Route 7. The applicant gave the following reasons to why the petition should be granted. A club was previously allowed as a permitted use in the LCI 40 zone. For some reason it was removed and subsequently revision of the zoning ordinance. The petitioner is under contract purchase premises commonly known as 36 Hollow Sugar - 36 Sugar Hollow Road, Danbury. The LCI 40 zone would appear to be most appropriate for clubs such as the Elks. Let us begin with some background information to explain why we are here. The LCI 40 zoning district located along Route 7 was a holdover from the days before the city and town of Danbury was consolidated in 1965. Prepared for a purpose was to allow for commercial and limited industrial uses. Regardless, the district contained a minority of conflicting uses which bore little relation to stated purpose, ranging from single-family homes to sawhills and mobile home parks, grooming houses to asylums, among others. Moreover, there was a number of permitted uses which could attract a significant amount of traffic to Route 7. This was a particular concern because the road was and is undergoing major improvements to ease traffic congestion. We didn't want to see that effort warranted by the traffic increases that could turn the road back into former protected state after long while waiting improvements were completed. And so, in 2007, zoning commission eliminated a host of uses in the LCI 40 to ensure that the permitted uses, one, were consistent with the purpose of the zoning district, and/or two, would be restricted to uses generating relatively low traffic volumes. But we didn't feel that this gave us part launch authority to eliminate all uses that were in variance with the purpose of the district. Some uses of minor impact remained, provided they were not major traffic generators. Nevertheless, the list of pertaining uses was reduced from '47 to '22. Unfortunately for the applicant, clubs were eliminated. They are defined in the zoning regulations as follows. An organization of persons which is the owner, less fee, or occupant of an establishment operating solely for recreational, social, patriotic, benevolent, or athletic purpose, but not for pecuniary gain, and which includes the establishment so operated. A member of the club is a person who, whether as a charter member or admitted in agreement with the bylaws of the club, has become a bona fide member thereof, who maintains his membership in a bona fide manner in accordance with such bylaws, and whose name and address are entered on the list of memberships. We believe that the Elks fit this description. Zoning districts often include some uses, examples, clubs and CL-10, supplemented to those which directly obtain the purposes of the zoning district. This application, we believe, can be interpreted as a use supplemental to commercial and industrial uses permitted in the district. If the petition is approved, we would not anticipate a rash of clubs, given who established themselves along Route 7, nor do we anticipate the Elks to be a major traffic generator. For these reasons, we do not oppose the addition of clubs in the LCI 40 zoning district. However, if you choose to approve this petition, the entry for clubs under section 5(c)(2a) should be numbered 7, not 6, as proposed, to maintain the matter of law.
The planning commission report, dated October 22, 2009, to the head chair of the Danbury zoning commission, from Arnoldi Fennell of Wounded, Chairman of the Danbury Planning Commission, reference 8-3A referral petition of the Danbury Lodge, number 120, benevolent and protective order of the Elks Incorporated, to amend section 5(c)(2a) of the zoning regulations, add club as permitted use to the LCI 40 zone. At the regular meeting held on October 21, 2009, City of Danbury Planning Commission voted to give the above referenced petition a positive recommendation, including the green numbering as suggested in the staff report. The following reason was given for the motion. It will not be detrimental to this zone to add this use. The motion was made by Ms. Hosteller, seconded by Mr. Keller, and passed with four ayes from Mr. Semenero, Ms. Hosteller, Mr. Keller, and Chairman Fennell, and one nay from Mr. Manley. Do you have anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, and this is the petition. My name is Robert Talerico. I'm attorney of the office of 142 Deer Hill Avenue, Danbury, and I represent the petitioner, the common referred to as the Danbury Elks Lodge. Just by way of a little background, if you've read the papers, you probably know that the lodge is under contract to sell its existing building on Main Street. And in looking for a new facility, the 36 Sugar Hollow Road seemed to be a really good fit for the lodge. That's the Indian train post, if you want to get some idea of where I'm talking about. I don't really think I have to repeat anything that's contained in Mr. Ellery's staff report. I think it kind of speaks for itself. Actually, I can give you a little more history of the LCI 40 zone, if you want about two minutes worth of interesting history. The city of Danbury and town, as you may recall, were consolidated effective January 1, 1965. The zoning ordinances were consolidated in 1973. I was planning zoning council at the time. The original proposal was to take Route 7, Route 6, Route 7, Sugar Hollow Road, and rezone it residential. And virtually every property owner came up and said, "Don't rezone this residential. State's going to condemn this property. You're going to get a lot less money if it's residential." So the LCI 40 zone was kind of reestablished. And that's almost 40 years ago they had a hope of building Route 7. The one thing that I would point out to the commission alone may be self-evident, is that clubs such as the Elks don't generate much traffic. And when we do generate traffic, it's on nights and weekends from the normal community traffic going back and forth to Danbury. This doesn't exist because our use, and almost any club use, is what we refer to as an after-hours facility. The meetings are overnight, and the social events are usually held on the weekends. And I think that while our potentially acquiring this property is the impetus for the zone, I really do think it makes a lot of sense to add the club use because, you know, no one else is going to build residences on that stretch of road, I don't think. And I think even the commercial is somewhat losing. And it's even more advantageous to us because the Elks draws this membership, not only from Danbury, but from many surrounding towns. It's just a great location for us. I think it's a wonderful spot for us. More significantly, I think putting the club use back in makes a lot of sense for any other fraternal or social organization which might, you know, want to relocate there someday. Unless there are some questions, I don't think I have any answer I need to say.
Any questions from the commission members? Commissioner DiCaprio?
Yes, my general question, I'm not concerned about the Elks, but is there a scenario that you can envision where it would be detrimental to, for a club to go in that area?
No, because if a club is - if we're going to build a facility today, we're going to have an approved site plan. We're going to have the appropriate cuts, which we have to get approval from the state DOT because it's a, you know, it's a state highway. It's going to conform to all of the zoning regulations requiring parking. And again, a year ago I said before, were a nighttime and weekend use, not a daytime use when commuters are going back and forth.
Commissioner Haddad?
I noticed on the last paragraph of the staff report, it says, "To maintain numerical order," if we approve this, it should be numbered as 7, not 6, as proposed. But the petition shows it as 6. If it's 7, what goes in number 6? I mean, who's wrong?
You switched.
Alphabetical.
Who switched? I'm sorry, who said that? No, it says numerical.
I might let the jury answer that question.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, excuse me.
It's sort of a change.
It's alphabetical, alphabetical.
It goes alphabetical?
Yeah.
So then, cleaning becomes 6, club becomes 7. Okay.
Just did this whole thing with my kids.
So C-L-E comes before C-L-U. Because it only said numerical, it didn't say alphabetical. I want to say that again.
My apologies.
Okay?
First, and I wanted to commend, because you were the only one here, as Attorney Talerico said, who would remember the 1965.
And I do. And Attorney Talerico, thank you for not embarrassing me like everybody else just did.
And you might be.
Any other questions of Attorney Talerico? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wish to speak against this petition?
Benjamin Shinizi, five by eight, vote. What do we have from here tonight? Well, I'm not really for nor against it at this point. I just wanted to get some more information. But one of the questions I do have is that clubs was in this zone, and it was taken out. So the question I would have is, why was it taken out? And the reasons that I would understand why it was taken out is that they didn't want Sugar Hollow Road to become another mill plane road. And as you know, at one point, mill plane roads did not allow retail on that road. That was changed 1992, around there. And one of the reasons, as I, as you know, I did sit in front of the zoning commission, one of the reasons why it was changed is that there was only a few spaces left that will allow for retail. 20 years later, as you can see, there are many retail locations. Buildings that were designed for office use is now retail. So when the attorneys said that there are no other places that can hold clubs, I think that's false. Because one of the things that the, that the commission has to deal with is, will clubs benefit the city as a whole? And the Elks is a very fine organization, and I have nothing against the Elks. But for this application change, it's not about the Elks. It's about a zone change along the clubs into the zone. The Elks could get the change, and they can sell their property. And any other use can go on that property, and you can have a larger club. Now, I know one of the things is you have to look into the future. What else could be built along that road? And you can have larger clubs. You can have a tuxedo junction, which brings in 500, 600 people on a weekend. A club includes a nightclub, but I believe the definition of a club includes nightclub. Unless I'm mistaken that a club is an actual nightclub. So it's my understanding that it's part of it, meaning a club is a club. Unless, of course, a applicant is going to define what a club is.
This is in reference, this is in reference to social clubs, not a...
It's a petition in the staff report.
I was not here for that.
An organization of persons which is the owner, less fee, or occupant of an establishment operated solely for recreational, social, patriotic, benevolent, or athletic purpose, but not for pecuniary gain, and which includes the establishment so operated. A member of the club is a person who, whether as a charter member or admitted in agreement with the bylaws of the club, has become a bona fide member thereof, who maintains his membership in a bona fide manner in accordance with such bylaws, and whose name and address are entered on the list of memberships. So I don't think it can be a retail organization or a nightclub.
Well, that's all the question.
Thank you. Commissioner DiCaprio, continue if you wish.
So for example, this cannot be used for, like, for a wedding reception, where they sell alcohol on the weekend? Possibly. So that followed the definition that you're giving?
Well, I don't know if that's a nightclub. That may be a catering hall.
But I understand, you can see that you can have other catering halls down the road. And again, I'm not just picking up other uses, because down the road, you have to look at not what this organization can do, what other organizations can do. And I know one of the questions that is going to come up deals with traffic, which of course this zoning commission has authority over at this point. Right now, Sugar Hollow Road is a two-lane road, but it's going to be made a four-lane road. It's going to be a high line. You're going to have cars coming off that road not doing 25, 35 miles an hour. You can have cars coming off there doing 65 miles an hour, 75 miles an hour. You need to consider that with any zone change. And it's important. This recently, about a month, month ago, there was an accident, something that killed on Sugar Hollow Road. If you look into the record, you'll see many other accidents occur along that stretch of road. It's a dark road, it's a fast road, it's only going to be a fast road. So I mean, all those leave to consider an any zone change, whether, again, is it beneficial of this city not to want organization? And what could other uses could be put on that road that fits this definition? And will it, if that's where this zoning commission wants to go? And if that's the case, then, again, fine. But again, I'm just giving you some information. Again, that's what the Elks is trying to do. I mean, they're a fine organization, but again, is this the right spot on that road? So that's all I'm here to do. Thank you.
Any, any commission members wish to ask a question? Yes, Mr. Gaddy?
Yes, just in advance to that, I believe the, and anyone correct me if I'm wrong, that the Elks is going for a social club license. There's different licenses from the state of Connecticut. But I think the word "club" in the zoning regulations, by putting that in, is going to sort of leave it open that anyone else could go in, but they're going to have to go for a different license. If you want a restaurant, you have to go for a restaurant. If you want a club, you have to go for a club license or a nightclub license. So putting "club" in there is not going to let the bar or nightclub go in, but it's going to give it the opportunity to apply to the state of Connecticut.
Commissioner Wetmore?
I just want to thank you, Monsieur Shinizi, because that was a concern of mine, what exactly permitted in interpretation of what clubs are allowed, but we're providing for nightclubs. So thank you, Commissioner DiCaprio, for also pointing that out.
But again, attorneys are very good in what they do. They'll take any definition if they need.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I just want to, and if the, the city itself wants to make comment on it, but it's, in my understanding, I mean, if you did bring up the point about if there was catering and whatnot going on there, I think that that falls under the precepts of what goes on inside of a social club. I mean, but it's not the prime designation of that club. I mean, that can occur in, in clubs of this nature, but they're not, you know, basically that's a part of that, but it's not the primary function. I think that's...
Is that the function?
You know, that, I think if you're looking at something like Catering Hall, something like Candlewood Inn, that does that as a primary function, that's a totally different scenario than what you're talking about here. This is a social club, and if somebody that's a member of this club and their niece is going to get married, and they want to have a function there, that's, that's a different auspice than if you were to do this on a regular basis.
Again, my concern here is the alcohol. Again, when people drink a lot of alcohol, and they got to come out on the road, that's four lanes now. No barrier in the middle. You have to consider that. That's what you get to.
Mr. Shinizi, that's something for the, we're granting a zone change, or looking at a zone change, or either looking at a liquor permit that's something that the state, well, that's something, we, we don't, we don't approve liquor permits.
We do.
What the state, the state approves liquor permits, we allow areas to be, we allow liquor permits to be established in properties. State doesn't, state doesn't have to grant it just because we grant the permission.
It's true, but you still have to grant the approval for this permit. That's how they...
But I don't think, Mr. Shinizi, I don't think the liquor permit really has, has any bearing on this.
No, but again, I'm repeating myself again, when you change a zone, you have to look at the implications of what you do. Not through one organization, again, because you may not be dealing with this organization. I mean, I sat on this commission numerous times, and I approved applications for one individual, and two years later, it's a totally different organization on that piece. You have to look to the future again. It's not about the Elks. It's about, I could have come here and asked for a club, the end of that. Anybody could ask for a club. So you have to look to the future. Now, what else could be there? And what do you expect, you want to see on this, on this piece? Again, clubs was in the zone, and it was taken out.
Before we continue, if I can interject, before we continue with any questions, I'd like to get maybe clarification from Ms. Calidra about the issue of the club, because it could be going down a road that this definition doesn't, doesn't follow what you're, what you're explaining.
Thank you. Again, the petition is for an amendment to the zoning regulations to add a specific use back into this zone. It existed prior to 2007, 2007, when it was deleted. The reason was, when we went back through the zones, as you all recall, we looked at all the uses. In this particular case, it's only one LCI 40 zone. Dennis and I drove up and down the roadway, and looked at the contingent of uses that existed there, and we made decisions and prepared recommendations to the commission to consider, getting rid of some of those uses that we, that were either non-existent or would be considered major traffic generator. And we were concerned about, obviously, that the rain interference going on. So we kind of go into that, there were no existing clubs there. We didn't think that, it wasn't because we were concerned that it being a traffic generator, there weren't no clubs, so why keep it in the zone? You know, nothing was going on. That's how it got included in the list of uses that were included. It used to go in the club, I guess. But then we know other socials clubs. The definition of social clubs is pretty exact in zoning regulations. To come in and apply for a site plan for that particular use, you have to meet that definition. You don't, you need to meet another definition of another use in the zone. With respect to catering and alcohol and liquor licenses, again, while this commission may approve them, we're not talking about a specific, site-specific plan at the moment. We're talking about tonight, a text amendment to allow a specific use in the zone. At the time that the applicant, if this goes forward, wants to submit an application for a site plan, or a approval for a liquor license there, we need to consider those impacts. And again, the site plan would have to meet all the zoning regulations in terms of traffic. And once more, it is state-led, state has to improve all the curriculums. We look at everything in relation to what we're improving to 2022.
Any other questions of Mr. Shinizi? Commissioner Johnson?
Well, so, just to reiterate here, now, if this commission were to change the zone to allow clubs, that doesn't mean that liquor licenses would be rapidly issued out all up and down the corridor. They still have to pertain to the same criteria that any liquor license would. So this, this change just merely allows a social club to be allowed to be provided for within the zone as it was. Reason it was written out was because there weren't any...
And we're not, I don't think that a nightclub is necessarily a social club, like, in a nightclub.
Hey, I recall that, and that was just a refining of a lot of zones at that time. It was just a...
We did all the revisions a little bit.
Right.
Commissioner Malillo?
Commissioner Calidra, I actually have a quick question for you. In light of the clarification you just made, in the past, when we looked at the zone changes, when we removed zone changes, you, Dennis, have mentioned before that you can't be, you know, you don't have to push the ball, I can't look on the road and say, "This is going to go in some places." So sometimes you remove things because they aren't there with the anticipation that at some point in time down the road, you're going to leave it to a petition to request it to come back. I think if the medical office going down, like, as you bring up. Would this fall into that case?
Yes, as Mr. Ellery indicated, we don't oppose it. If we, you know, if there's some strong opposition, we had some real concerns about proliferation of clubs on every available parcel we said, and you can imagine. I mean, there, some of those parcels, there's not much left there to do, to take through and, and why the road? And there are significant environmental constraints for parcels. So, you know, few and far between uses and what's left to be developed on that road.
Commissioner Gaddy? I'm sorry, I follow this. Commissioner Haddad?
Thank you. She just, she just said the same thing. Before she spoke, I had my hand raised. And if we recall, I was going to address the issue on, by the way, as a matter of housekeeping. This is an amendment to the regulations, not a zone change. But I recall when the petition came in to clean up the LCI, they basically took it a whole bunch of things that had been there for a million years and says, "Let's just throw it out." So they were, they were cleaning it up with a bunch of other zones based on recommendations of the staff when they came in. The definition was, was read a couple times this evening. It's not site-specific, so Mr. Shinizi does have a good argument about it being, you know, that whole LCI area. But, but the last point I want to mention was just what Ms. Calidra just said, and that is, there's nothing left on, there's nothing left on that road. The LCI has nothing left from what the state took, from environmental concerns, and sizes of properties, the road taking those other areas. There's nothing left on the road. There's not going to be a whole bunch of clubs that are going to open up. And now that we know what the definition of a club is, and that being a tuxedo junction, I think it's clear in the commission what the intent of the applicant is.
Any other questions from the commission members for Mr. Shinizi? Thank you.
That's my, just wish to add that. But again, as Mr. Shinizi made a point earlier, the Worcester Gun Club is, is a site that is still a, they can turn that into a club as well. So that could be a lines for the park. So you can't say there's nothing left, because there is. Thank you.
And what else wishes to speak against this petition? Anyone else wish to speak against this petition?
Perkins, please. I'd like to make a statement. Mr. Perkins, if you could raise the microphone.
Or you could hold it if you wish. That microphone set to somebody my size. Thank you. Thank you.
Will we, you won't be voting on this, this evening, or will it continue?
We don't know that yet. We don't know that yet.
One more question for clarification. Does this change, and the word of clubs include all of the other LCI 40 zones, or just this that one on, on that road?
This is, this is the only LCI zoning the entire city of Danbury?
What I'd like to say is, I would like to say that there may be a little haste and also myopic in determining the name change in this particular zone. I say that because of some of the points that Mr. Shinizi just raised. Translators are very clever, and they have a way of manipulating things. Maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but sometimes down the road, different types of word changes, word uses can be used against it. So you've seen that many times in the past, where we actually gave away certain types, certain censuses or breaks, and they came down... certain censuses or breaks, and they came out to be detrimental, basically, to our tax base. So what I would like to ask the commission is basically to consider extending the public hearing so that we can have an opportunity for more people to get involved with the discussion. More residents who live in the area, you know, Stars Plain, Dixmaner, West Reading Road, and also more people who have a vested interest in what's going on along that whole entire corridor. So I ask the commission to, again, continue the merits of the debate.
Mr. Chairman? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Perkins? Mr. Gaudy? You know, it's these glasses, you know, it's, I apologize. Make sure I had it.
Just for the record, the petition was submitted August 26, 2009. Can somebody tell me when the legal notices were? What, I'm sorry, now that they were ready, they were published in the paper?
Commissioner Malillo? I'm sorry, Commissioner Whitemore? They were published.
Glasses really are bad, so.
They were published. Yeah, they may go a work there.
They were published October 17, 2009, and October 24, 2009.
And Joanne, that's not all of our statutes and regulations? Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Does Mr. Perkins have, do you, somebody in specific that feel wanted to approach the board that may not be here now, or was not informed that?
Well, to be totally honest, this was a little eleven hour for me also. And I would have liked to be able to contact more people in that particular area who are supposed to hear, let them hear what is being proposed.
And most of the people on this board know that I'm very liberal on allowing more time if there's a qualifying reason, but, you know, it was published within, as Commissioner had said, everything was put in the paper and done within the criteria. If there was somebody in specific that you said, you know, had some sort of reason to come forward and say, I'm totally against this, you know, basically amounts to a burglage change, I would be, you know, more willing to look at that. But as it stands, I think that all the criteria were met, so just to extend a public hearing for no better reason than there's a slight chance.
I guess what I'm saying is, I'm just a little concerned about the potential escalation or ramifications of what this whole thing could be.
Could that have potentially been addressed by the fact that it was brought up that there's very, basically no other properties that could be brought into this realm with the sole exception of the gun club and something else?
People buy and sell properties all the time, so some of those businesses that do exist there, it could be bought and sold. So there is a potential for something greater that actually is proposed on paper. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Malillo?
Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, I have a quick question for you, and I'm just curious. Did you mention this, when you found out about this at eleven hours? I'm just curious, did you find out about it as you looked at, maybe as part of your habits, a councilman, looking through the minutes of the agendas of upcoming meetings? Or did you find out about it, it came brought to your attention, it gets to you, brought to your attention? Just, what is that?
What brought to my attention?
By constituent or?
Another council member.
Because I just wanted to point out also that, in addition to the legal notices on our September 27 meeting agenda, we also have under the new business, this petition. So in addition to the legal notices, anybody who does follow the zoning commission, or just maybe for that matter, general interest of meetings, as I know, it's in Danbury, have the potential of seeing this meeting over a month.
Thank you. There's Ms. Calidra.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm the short. It's all the first. With respect to the properties alone, there obviously are several properties that run from Danbury to Richfield. They have been altered in their configuration as a result of the widening of the food center. But there are buildable properties there. There are properties that can be assembled and converted and changed over. So, again, this use in this zone would be similar to any other use in this zone. Somebody wants to put in another social club somewhere else, they would have to abide by the zoning regulations and get that site plan and your special exception, if it's a threshold, in terms of traffic generation approved, no different than any other use. So there are properties there. There is a gun club, obviously, on the side of the road. But there are properties there, and they do have essential environmental constraints, as we all know. I just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions of Mr. Perkins from any of the commission members or of Ms. Calidra? Anyone else wish to speak against this petition?
Good evening, members of the commission. Followed by thirteen, Mr. D'Amore. The Wall Street Journal came out with an article named "Rougers" yesterday about newspapers. One newspaper increased circulation in the last year. It's the Wall Street Journal. Every other newspaper applying, local newspapers applying, like the Danbury Sky, so they're thirty percent of the rest of the public business. So this idea that we put a legal notice in the newspaper, and that everybody knows about it, because we put a legal notice in the newspaper, might be true in the 1950s and 1930s, when Danbury had two papers a day. But these days, it's not true at all. Most people want to be thirty-five or twenty-one, and read a newspaper. So we need, as city officials, to develop a better system of educating the neighbors about potential zone changes. This idea that we simply put a legal notice in and our hands are clean means we did that may be true legally, and may be true by state statute, but it's probably not true on a practical basis or a moral basis. And if you guys are interested, you can pick up the phones tomorrow and make calls to residents of Stars Plain, what's running, and ask them if they know about this. And I'll bet you, and I'll give you odds that they know. So that's what we're faced with. Unless there is some urgency to approve this and I were to close this tonight, and it sounds to me as if not only staff, but this board is advocating in favor, unless there is some urgency, my suggestion is to continue it and let the news filter out, because it will filter out. After the residents, who will be most affected by this? The ones who live on.
Mr. Roosevelt, is there anything about the amendment you wish to speak about?
Route seven, as we know, has been reconstructed. It is now two lanes going northbound, two lanes westbound. One thing that they did not do was put an median between those two lanes. We have a road that's now capable of handling as much traffic as a closed access highway because of issues in Reading and in Richfield. We're probably never going to have a closed access highway down the corridor. But we do have enough capacity now to handle the traffic. People living riding on the road the last seven months know that speeds around sixty and sixty-five miles an hour. The issue is, unlike a closed access highway, curb cuts don't lead a front-end road into an entrance ramp, they lead directly to this strip of asphalt, very nice series. If the zone were to remain purely industrial, and you had industrial properties and workers entering the existing properties between normal business hours, for the industry party, between six a.m. and eight p.m., and if you have one set of circumstances you have to deal with, but clubs have a tendency, particularly social clubs have a tendency, running up facilities for parties, and most parties often, in fact, are alcohol. And I know that this is a separate issue with zoning. We're not talking about the liquor license act, but we are opening that door. So my specific concern would be for the future of this zone change, that it could lead to a situation where we have a structure like the neighborhood that then me blesses intoxicated people from essentially a park lot that is connected directly to a high-speed corridor serving border cars that are coming. To me, that's bad, other than that. I realize this is not going to cover all the industrial properties in Danbury, but we also know that when we open the door to a special exception like what happened with Kendall Lane, we had issues with that. I mean, it seemed like a good idea at the time, twenty years ago, to have those exceptions to Kendall. And now we have to deal with that, or more importantly, the residents of the fifth and sixth and seventh wards have to deal with that. I reckon that the sixth ward, and you heard a gentleman sitting here who represents the fifth ward, these are on both sides of Route seven. And my guess is, and it's not just a guess, it's an educated guess, that you would query the neighbors, and we will be doing that in the next week or two about this particular issue, they'll have some comments. And I think that if you leave this open for at least one more meeting, some of those people might be able to come near, discuss those, kind of directly to you, and especially how legal or the rest of the group here can rebut them, perhaps even their satisfaction. But, you know, unless there's some urgency about approving this closing here, my request is, if you're willing, if you still want to, thanks. That's all.
I have a dozen phone calls about this, and all the people are satisfied as they found out what it was. That's many more than I normally get. And also, this is on the website, too. It's not just in the newspaper, they have people call all the time, because we look at the website and look at all the agendas.
I call to you, I call.
Any commission members have any questions for Mr. Roosevelt? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I have, well, one comment that I had was that, as I'm looking over the permitted uses, they're not specifically industrial in any means. Barber shops, beauty parlors, churches, dressmakers, locksmiths, firehouses, forest or wildlife preservation, so I don't think that's. Nurseries, kindergartens, one-family dwellings, so it's not exactly a. And then, more to the point.
Mr. Roosevelt, tell me, if you have opportunity, give up the.
I just like to address the issue that you brought up. You brought up that perhaps this commission doesn't put out its information enough to the members of the town, and my question would be, how better should we put it out? If you have, being a councilman, perhaps we should forward all of our information to the council, and the council personnel can talk to all the people in their district or ward, and call them individually, and let them know what's coming up, if that would be better. But as far as it stands, by statute, which you control.
Speaker.
Well, who decides how we put our information forward?
Speaker.
Okay, should you propose that, if the council come up with a better way for us to put our information forward? Because I can tell you right now, we don't have a different way to do it. We do it by statute, as you do your stuff by your statutes. And then to come back there and to say that we're remiss in doing our job properly is kind of a front to me, and I'm sure to the other commission members here. We, this information was put out as it should have been. If you think that there's a plausible reason, as you express, but please don't come here and say that we're not doing our job properly because we put it in the paper as we're required to. Now, if you have a better way, it's up to you to come up and approach the state and say to them, wow, I have a better way that we should do it. We should have all the members of the city council call every individual and tell them every proposal that's coming up on every commission, every board. Maybe that'd be better. But as far as I'm concerned, this was done as it should be. If you have a plausible reason, as I asked Mr. Perkins, to say that we should not go forward, which nobody's even suggested that we would, but, you know, to come in here and say that the way that we've been doing business for, I don't know how long it's been going on this way, but as long as I know, you know, if there's a better way to do it, that would be great to put that forward, and we could find out a better way to make sure that everybody knows about it. But other than that, I think this might not be the proper form right now with this mandate to say we're gonna change everything without coming up with a better way to inform people. You know, are you gonna, do you have a reason why you're gonna inform people? Or you're telling people other information, or, you know, what is? And I'm a little confused as to why this is coming about. If you could answer that.
Through the chair, if I can respond. Beginning, well, I didn't come here to insult this body. I mean, responding to comments that Mr. Canada had made about the article of legal notice going to the paper. My response is more self-effacing than critical against this body. What I said. What I said, if I recall, is that as officials, we need to do a better job of educating the public, including myself, I'm just speaking to myself, I'm not speaking to this body. I'll definitely give a legal notice in terms of state statute. I'm connected with all the municipalities that are powered from the state statute, and we can only do what's authorized by them. And they authorize us to do that, though. We know that the newspaper, this vehicle that we use for making notices is being less and less by the community. There may be other ways. Off the top of my head, I can suggest what some communities do, just to put a sign up on any particular parcel where they are contemplating a zone change. It works very well in council, in town councils.
But this is a zone change, just a clarification.
Yeah, I mean, if you put a sign up, you inform the people who live there. We don't do that, that makes it something that people are guilty of. It's allowed by the state. My comment is that if I found out about this the last twenty-four hours, I'm guessing, and that was an educated thing. So a lot of people either just found out about this, or they did find out about this. And I've spoken to several people in this, it's kind of not expanding your lines on telephone calls that you got. Again, I'm not criticizing this body, I'm simply saying that when it comes, I think, to expansive and popular public policy, if there is an issue like this that can affect the neighborhood like this, and there is some doubt as to whether the people in the neighborhood are as fully informed as they should be, let's wait to find out. That's all I'm saying. If you don't paint the best profit, that's your decision.
Actually, quite the contrary. I've always felt that every issue that comes before this board has a great bearing on the city. Every issue. I feel that this is a very underlooked at board, because the decisions made on this board are never taken lightly, because they carry bearing on great stretches of property within the city, and they have long-term effects on the city. And so I've always felt that that was the case. And what I find as curious is that why, all of a sudden now, the way we've been issuing our, you know, our information is no longer, it goes out on the web, it's out, there's a better way. I'm not trying to be critical, I'm trying to find a way to do it better.
I have a lot of great deal of latitude in straying way away from the proposed topic on both sides. Mr. Manasseh?
Yeah, I just want to make three comments. One, I don't think any of us feel we're being rushed here. And we've always listened to the public, and we're divided for, yes, any particular topic that comes here and will truly do that. Number two, I believe Main Street is four lanes also. And number three, I don't believe that we turn it here in any stretch from what I can read, change in wording. So that's just three comments, that's it.
Any more questions? Commissioner Malillo?
Mr. Rotello, I actually have a question. I'm curious, your primary concern in your mind regarding the language here for a club, is it more club-specific, or is it more alcohol-related to the board? So the actual definition of club, that is, because there is nothing in the definition, I can show you, it's right here. There is no mention of alcohol specifically in the definition, and that we're, while we're looking.
We're probably going to go.
But we're also talking about a zone change, a burgage amendment. Ms. Calidra, do we know, is there currently alcohol allowed in this parcel? Do they use?
No, I believe, Mr. Rotello, before you came in, Commissioner DiCaprio did read that definition. So we understand that you were without that information. So please take the time to take a look at that to clarify your understanding.
My question, if I, because my question is, and I know you're familiar with the zoning commission, you are a former member of the zoning commission. We deal with the zone change. You know, we deal with the zone change, and we deal with the alcohol conditions separately. And if it's an issue with the alcohol, it's almost more of a site-specific everything, or, or specific if the Elks came back with us. And let's be honest, we're talking about the Elks, and I think we all know what, you know, how the Elks early have their Main Street clubs set up right now. They would come back to force with the request to allow alcohol at that use. And I think at that point in time, because I can think of maybe one or two clubs where they may not be alcohol. I may be stretching, but there may be some, and I would hate to see us take the terminology here, and then just take it off the focus of the no change amendment and make it priceless.
Let me clarify my position.
Any other questions of Mr. Rattell?
Is there a question?
I did ask a question. I did ask a question.
Wait, Mr. Rattell, send it to...
If we were talking about a citywide industrial zone that's going to get changed, I would object on those grounds, but we're not. If I'm talking about a small corridor in there that's essentially foxed and by bloodlines, it's not going to have a monolithic effect on that area. So that's one objection I deliver. If we were talking about clubs that would stipulate they would not serve alcohol, that's another objection to fall under the same. My main objection to this is that we are about to open the door to one more and more clubs on Green 7 that will be serving alcohol. All that is my main objection. And let me just say, the Elks have been a great neighbor and a great asset to Danbury going back decades, generations, and they've got a fabulous building, and many, many great memories on that building, and all sad circumstances have led them to have to sell it for new location, and I am sure that they will be a great asset in their new location. What I'm not sure is if that new location includes serving alcohol in that spot, if it will be the best use along that narrow, heavy traffic corridor. By the way, I came back from a meeting last week in the state, and we are in the process of formulating a plan for eighty-four, which would be a widening and increased capacity, and clean up that seven eighty-four interchange, so let even more traffic come up from southern part of the town, so we can expect more traffic along the corridor, I guess.
Any other questions of Mr. Rattell from commission members?
Thanks for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak against this petition? Anyone else wish to speak against this petition? Anyone else wish to speak against this petition?
First of all, I would like to say that if Mr. Perkins is somehow suggesting that I'm being manipulative, I take great offense to that remark. The club is defined in the zoning ordinance. I'm not being manipulative at all. I'm asking, on behalf of my client, for this commission to reinstate the club as a permitted use in the LCI forty zone. Very, very obvious, I'm not trying to hide it. I also respectfully disagree with Mr. DiCaprio comparing Route Seven to the Mill Plain Road situation. The Mill Plain Road situation was all retail.
Mr. Rattell.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna help trouble already.
It looked like if you put your name tag up on it, you'd be...
He's not very kind, he'll see them.
Look, the comparison to the Mill Plain Road, I think it's totally problematic. Thirdly, on, on the issue of procedure, you know, I think that my client, like any other individual who comes before this zoning commission, is entitled to utilize and rely on the general statutes provides of procedure. Anybody who's interested enough in what's going on in this town, one way or the other can find out. I think that's very simple. You know, my client has time constraints, you know, we, we would like to see this matter border upon at some point in time in the near future, and we see no reason for it to I also appreciate Mr. DiCaprio's concern for, quote, drinking and driving. But that's nothing but discommission or any other commission, right?
Tony, Tony, where are you going?
Are you very much sorry, Tony?
I, I do believe you're, are you referring to either Mr. Rattell or Mr. DiCaprio?
No, I'm referring, I'm referring to Mr. Chinese.
Oh, okay.
No, that, that's, that's not something that we can really control here. Ah, one of the members, one of the members of the commission was reading a list of the uses in the LCI forty zone. Any use in the LCI forty zone, not just a potential use of the Elks, is going to have to get the site plan approved, get the curb cuts approved by the state of Connecticut, and go through all of the normal procedures for being able to construct a facility of some kind. I mean, you take the comments that were made today by the opposition, and they almost literally say, "Don't use this property for anything." That's ridiculous. It's gotta be used, it should be used for something. The current owners have the right to use it for something. The potential purchaser has the right to use it for something. I think there are plenty of safeguards here, and I think that all we're really talking about tonight is whether it's appropriate to reinstate a club as a permitted use in the LCI forty zone. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything, anything to add from what you've already added, then, Ms. Clettre? Commissioner Haddad?
Yeah, please, if I could, just a couple of questions.
Can I find my microphone?
I'm sorry, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. If, if this petition is approved, and maybe this is for attorney Tellerico, if this petition is approved, am I correct in, no, I'm not gonna make an assumption, is the Elks facility as it is right now being picked up and put over there, or is there another, do they have to go through a whole process for alcohol again, or do you sure, do they bring that with them?
The whole permit, no, no, no. The whole permit process starts from scratch.
Okay.
The plan is to bulldoze the building and start all over again.
So then you're gonna be, if you get approved here tonight, you're gonna get approved to go in as a club, as the definition of the zoning regulations allow. You've got four walls, you're then gonna go in for further approvals for what you need.
We don't even have four walls.
You will, hopefully someday. And a...
Hopefully someday.
All right, so, so then you're going to then apply for your various liquor permits, or however you dispense it, whether it's through parties or activities or things like that, certainly not like a, a profit-making venture.
Well, that's really not, because the Elks currently hold a club permit, they presumably will apply for another club permit.
Um, it's, it's, I would, that, that's what, that was what my assumption was. I just didn't want to say that, because I don't want to sound like a fool. I, I think it would be very difficult for this commission, if it did approve this petition tonight, to see you here at a point in time, looking for liquor permission, as you have it exactly right now, and for, we'd be pretty hard-pressed to deny that, because we've had clubs come to us before, we've had clubs across the street from churches on this commission get approved for liquor. And it's in a regulation that it, if it's detrimental to a church, school, or convent, then it shouldn't be approved. One across the street from the Elks on Main Street right now. So I can understand, I can understand their concern when they're saying, "Yeah, if you get approved, it doesn't come with liquor," but liquor is going to be applied for in the very near future, because that's how you operate. So that's, that's a concern, or a thought, a thought that I have. And then the next statement I would have would be to the staff, and that is, and this isn't the right time, so I'll be brief, but this commission did look into, when I was chairman, as part of the petition process, to put a sign on the property saying, "These premises are up for amendment change or zone change," so that the public would, in fact, I think Mr. Rattell was on the commission at that time, and we were told by the staff that it would be an additional clause of the petition or the nonsense of nothing that we should look at, into right now. But since the news times circulation is declining, I really think it's because of the news times and not ju, just, just because of the public. Going through that rag anyway, that's just my one man's opinion. But maybe that's something we should also look into on slide note.
Another refined statement.
Well, my only comment there would be, you might want to, you know, discuss this with council, I'm not, I'm not sure the city can alter the state, the state statute mandates.
Well, no, no, no.
I don't know the answer to that question, I'm just raising...
We, we looked at that about a decade ago, and if this commission wants to make that a regulation as part of, of, you know, whether a regulation, if somebody goes in for a zone change or change the regulations, or post it on the property, they do it in Milford, they do it in Stanford, a couple of places, so. I mean, it was only, I'm only mentioning because it was brought up here, we cannot do it for the public, we did everything we're supposed to do, we met our regulations, and we did it correctly, it's just not to some people's satisfaction. But that doesn't mean that we can't do it more correctly next time. Just a thought. Mr. Chairman, you're the new guy here.
My, my only comment to your question was, or your comment was, if we wanted to lodge petitions for whatever, petition for in front of the zoning commission, I would hope that we would be treated no differently than any other club in the community.
Any other questions about the proposed amendment for attorney Tellerico? Thank you. Commissioner Malo?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to oppose the public hearing.
We have a second?
Say it.
Second by Commissioner Javi. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? You have an interest in moving this to...
Mr. Chairman, do you want to make a motion to move this to item number one for the whole business?
We have a second? So seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that a nay?
I mean, aye. I'm opposed.
You're opposed, I'm sorry for the late motion.
Okay. It passes seven and two. We have item number one, and our old business for consideration of possible action. Petition of the Danbury Lodge, number one twenty, the benevolent respect of order of the Elks Incorporated to amend section five C two A of the zoning regulations, add club as a permitted use to LCI forty zone. Entertained a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve this petition, in that this petition is consistent with the plan of conservation relevant, in my opinion. If, this would also not be detrimental to this zone. There is not an anticipation at this time that this would be a major traffic generator. And lastly, I'd just like to add that this use was previously allowed within this zone with no known detrimental effect.
We have a second on that motion?
I'd like to second the motion, I, I, I don't know, just to add in for, and to renumber for housekeeping.
Renumber for housekeeping.
Okay.
From six to seven.
Could you be seconding?
I seconded, I opposed that.
I'll, I'll change it for, maybe you need to worry about change. That's my motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Haddad?
Um, Mr. Johnson, with all due respect, I love you like a brother. When Mr. Johnson comes in with his concoctions about, "I think we gotta wait, I think we gotta wait," I want to toss him on the third floor and down. But he always wanted to have the public, he, he came in one day and said, "I bumped into a woman in the supermarket, I think she wants to speak at a meeting tonight." And we, we tabled the whole thing, and the woman never showed up. We heard from a couple of people tonight that said, "I think other people want to speak." We met our regulation, we met our law, we met everything we had to meet, and I just have always been so opposed to that. Not to let the public speak, but when I think it's not useful or concocted for whatever reason, I've always been opposed to that. I'm, I'm looking at our next meeting being November tenth, not a long ways away. I, I, I think that I would be curious to see if, on the November tenth meeting, if anybody else came to speak to this.
I'm pretty sure Haddad...
Hold on, but the public hearing's been closed, so that, that lets that out of my, out of my mind. I want to get that comment in, just to let you know, let, let the people that spoke know where, where my thoughts are. There is a motion on the floor, and there are reasons to go with it and further amend it by housekeeping. While I am compassionate to what their concern was, I, I think that there was enough time for anybody that had to speak to come forth. So I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to vote on that motion as well, but I don't want to get those comments in on the record.
Any other discussion?
I concur with Mr. Haddad's.
You take a rulebook. Aye approves, nay is unapproved. Commissioner Malo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. DiCaprio?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddad?
Yes.
Commissioner Javi?
Yes.
Commissioner Manasek?
Yes.
And Mr. Stramiello?
Yes.
And Mr. Wetmore?
Yes.
And I too will vote this, pass it unanimously. Do we have nothing under new business, nothing under correspondence? Do we have under other matters, like to apologize to Commissioner Haddad for calling Commissioner Javi a handful of times?
Hey, I think DiCaprio's got a bigger apology coming. He's telling him about four times, he only did it to me twice.
All right, we have, anything else under other matters?
I think we should all donate money to the myopia.
All right.
Go ahead, you do a adjourn.
We have some reference stuff there.
Oh, sorry.
For reference only, you have number one, petition of forty-six Mill Plain LLC, Emity Lane for zone change from RA forty to CA eight, public hearing scheduled for November tenth, two thousand nine, number two, petition of the City of Danbury by Denzai Elper, playing the director of management sections three eight one, et cetera, et cetera, for zoning regulations, public hearing scheduled for November tenth as well. Commissioner Wetmore makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Stramiello.
Aye.
All the people say aye.
Aye.